All good?
All good.
All right, thank you everyone for coming to this special meeting of the Denville Board Township, Board of Education on October 3rd. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and in each of these school buildings in the district. Roll call please.
Mr. Edison? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mrs. Deluna?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Here.
Mr. Lor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Watner?
Here.
Mr. Capella?
Here. Now, we do our own pledge of allegiance here, correct?
Flash out, sorry. I can't hear you.
Yeah, there you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the end. All right, everybody? And, uh... We save seats.
Oh, okay.
We have a second, we have a second row on the left side. All right, yes, you can take that off.
For giving us the time to make this presentation to the council at the scene. As many of you know, the district's been working very hard in the last two years to assess the current state of our facilities, our enrollment, with an eye towards eliminating substandard space, instructional space in our schools, including the use of trailers for students, and planning for our future. To provide some brief background before Steve's presentation, in the last eighteen months, we've completed a facility room usage study on all the enrollments, a demographic study of population trends in the town, and the impacts they might have on enrollment, and most recently, a comprehensive five-years strategic plan with strong community involvement. As part of this process, the board identified several options for renovating and/or adding on to our facilities. Some of the projects were aimed solely at eliminating the use of substandard space, and other larger options would have been substantial additions that would have provided some room for further population growth that our demographic study showed is likely to occur in the next five years. The board reviewed all of these options, and this spring and early summer, we were seriously evaluating an addition to Riverview School, which would have required roughly $10 million referendum, and would have eliminated our use of substandard space throughout the district, as well as providing some space for future growth and enrollment. While the board was having those conversations, the various developments the town is now working through, starting with the Redden Press project, came to our attention. After some informative and productive meetings with the town administration, the board felt there were too many questions about the size, the timing, and the scope of these projects for us to be confident that a Riverview expansion project alone would be sufficient. We were frankly afraid we would be building something that would be inadequate if soon as it was complete, if all the developments being proposed came to pass. In light of these concerns, the board felt that this presentation is important, so we can inform the council and community at large about the current capacity of our schools, and to offer information you hopefully can use when considering developers' plans and what they mean in terms of increases in student enrollment in our schools, and the costs associated with those increases. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve, and then hopefully after, we can answer any questions he has. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. For the general public, if you're not sure, my name is Steve Forte. I'm the superintendent of the Denville School District. This is my fourth year in Denville, my seventh year as a superintendent altogether. I also live in town about a block away, and have two children, two school-aged children, so I have a pretty big stake in all this stuff, too. First of all, just again, I want to thank you for allowing us to come in here, take a portion of your meeting, just to give you information. We know you have a hard, you have hard decisions to make in the future, and we're not here to try to tell you how to make them. We just want you to, when I walk out of here, I want everybody to understand, you know, the impact of whatever decisions are made, what will happen to the districts in terms of our populations. So, just a quick review. So, since 2014, the district has, has really spent a lot of money from the budget, not from referendum, but from the budget, to, to make needed repairs to the schools. Just a few things, we've, we've spent two, almost two and a half million dollars on new sections of roofing throughout the district, site work, repairs, bathrooms. We conducted what's called an ESIP plan, which is a, an energy savings plan that allows you to leverage the savings to pay for the, for the upgrades. We've done, we've renovated and reconfigured two of our three libraries, the third one is on schedule for this summer, which actually was more about reconfiguring the library to pick up classroom space. And we've done a lot of work with our network and Wi-Fi. We also provide free lunches for economically disadvantaged children, and we are funding a homework help program at Pure Place. And, and all, all's told, since 2014, those programs are almost $7 million. All of those programs, again, were completed without any additional funding, only through the budget, and from grants, meaning like our, our federal grants and state grants. One other point is, the district, the last of the debt from, from the Denville School District will expire in 2019. So our, our bonding went out from the additions at Lakeview in the late 1990s. The, all of that will expire in 2019. We won't, we do not at this time have plans to take on future debt. We spent a good portion of last year working with 120-plus stakeholders throughout the district, including, including people from the township, the township government, and the police, all different people, community people, school teachers, even, even some students who were involved, to help create this strategic plan, which we call Denville 2022. And we came up with our four goals. You can see the fourth goal, not that the other ones aren't important, but I'm really here to talk about our facilities, is to create safe and secure learning environment equipped to deliver 21st century educational expectations using efficient and sustainable facilities district-wide. So, we have a goal that deals mostly with our, our facilities. This next slide talks about our challenges in history. So, when our, and I'm going to get to a slide a little later on our, on our enrollment in the past, and over since two, since 1979, you'll see it's almost like a roller coaster. So, back in 2006, when there was a big influx of people, of students coming in, the district at that time had already, already completed the large addition at Lakeview, and at that time, it did not feel like we should go out for another referendum. I shouldn't say "we" because I wasn't involved. At that time, the board decided not to go out for another referendum, but to use, utilize things like trailers and other substandard space. The other substandard space we use are dual-use space, and I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. It's like where you have two classrooms at the same time. Oh, I don't know why that went off. Maybe you gotta touch it? Yeah. So, you have two, two classrooms, two classes going on at the same time in the same room, you know, with two different teachers teaching something else. We also have four, we also have four classes that need bathrooms that, according to codes, we have a couple things we have to work on with that. Here's a picture of what it looks like. That was an excellent shot, one of our vice principals took. You can see there's a, two classes, a teacher on the right trying to teach a small group class, and a teacher on the left teaching a small group class at the same time. The wall that's there is only about three-quarters of the way to the ceiling, because you can't put a wall without two exits and all that, so we just, it's kind of a, a half-wall or a three-quarter wall. It doesn't stop the sound. So these are, these are what the county and the state consider, consider to be substandard space. Now, in our district, we have trailers at all three schools. Because of the reconfiguration of the libraries and some other things that we did within the building envelope, we were able to eliminate the use of trailers at Valley View last year for students, and at Riverview this year for students. We still have the trailers, staff uses them, we use them for storage, but we do not use them for student instruction. Next year, the plan is to work on the Lakeview Library and eliminate that. As you see, this is a picture of Lakeview, and during the day, both trailers are utilized for teaching, for instruction, and that's been since 2006. According to that state code that I put up there, temporary instructional space like that is only supposed to be used for two years with a maximum of three-year renewal. So, a five-year maximum, and we're, you know, this is from 2006, so this is why we're in a situation where we need to do something. We, we work with a demographer, his name is Ross Haber, he works all throughout the state. He's working with Rockaway Township recently, he's been in Monroe, if you know anything about Monroe Township, it's really growing, so he's working with a lot of different towns throughout the state. He also works in, in New York State as well. He, he did this projection for me, so rather than have, rather than pick on a specific projection, because it seems like it changes all the time, I wanted to give you an example of what would happen. So if, if, if the decision was to allow for 300 units to be built in the town, anywhere, wherever it is, and at a 15% COA rate, with 100 rentals and 200 condos, again, this is not any particular one, it's just, it's just a sample. When all said and done, there would be, according to this, this study, and this is a scientific study based on lots, so it could have some variances, you'd have 64 students come out of the 100 rentals, 187 come out of the 200 sales. So, a total of 251 students out of the 300 units could be expected with the configuration I gave you. The 226 would be expected to be in K8, and if you look, I show you why that is. This is a, this is a, you know, they, they use this all around the state, so it's, it's not an exact thing, but it's, it's what would be expected, 70% K5, 20% middle school, 10% high school. So, it would have an impact of 226 students K8, 25 in the high school, and 251 total from that 300 unit that I just mentioned. On the right side, up there, you can see our current class sizes. And at the bottom, I put our board policy as to what our class limits are. So, K1 class is student in the district, our limit is 23 students, grades 2, 2.5, the limit is 26, and grades 6, 2.8 is 29. So, as you see, if, if you divide, again, this would just be, if you, if you had an exact distribution that worked out exactly, that every, every grade had 30 kids in it, it would, in some of our grades, it would go over our limits. We also don't, we, at this time, considering what we're going to do this year, we will have no more room to do anything within our building envelope, to even split a class if we wanted to. This is the enrollment history since 1979. I wanted to show you because you can see it's got, it started high, it's gone down, it's gone up, it's gone down, and at the end, it's pretty much leveling off with a slight increase. Our demographer said that our, our numbers are going to pretty much stay standing with a possible slight increase. So this last sheet, I just wanted to put up here was some facts. The enrollment has gone down, but is now leveling off. FTK stands for full-time kindergarten, so the addition of full-time kindergarten added, added the need for four classrooms with bathrooms. And I wanted to give you a little data on, on the success of the full-time kindergarten. First of all, 80% of the schools in New Jersey do have full, full-time kindergarten. And prior to full-time kindergarten, in Denville, less than 20% of our kindergarten students read on grade level and enter in grade one. So it's, it's like the, the minimum, what you should be at entering grade one. We had 20% of our students going into grade one, reading at that level. With the addition of full-time kindergarten, that number's now 90%. Now, the time that we spent in halftime kindergarten is actually equal to the entire literacy block they get. So, really, by the, by the introduction of the full-time and adding all that extra time, is, is actually, the literacy block is equivalent to what they were getting the whole time in a half-day kindergarten. So, it really has shown some tremendous statistical improvements in our reading, in our literacy. Now, we have pre-K, and we don't have a pre-K that's, we don't have the kind of pre-K that's for all students. This is a, a pre-K that's mandated for specialized students. You can either, you can either have a class yourself, or you can send kids out of the district. So we have, we, at one time, only five, six years ago, we had one pre-K, now we have three. The laws keep changing, the way that we identify students and what, what we're required to offer them, it changes. So now we've gone, like I said, from one kid, one pre-K to four. Each one of those four pre-Ks needs a bathroom. I bring that up because it's important to note that we don't, we have three of them currently in rooms that don't have bathrooms, so, you know, you see kids about this tall walking around the hallway, it's, it's not really a safe situation, so we're going to work on that this summer. We've had to add new special education classes, just the way, it's the way it works out. You, you have a certain limit, and you have to split the class. Again, I already mentioned this, but we are, we are planning to do the third library renovation at Lakeview, to add two regular classrooms to the, to the, to the facility. And this was going to be decided, as Dino said, rather than a $10 million referendum. So, basically, after, after our strategic planning, which was important, we went, we wanted to do this first, because we, we talked with the public, we got everybody's input, we actually did a survey. What came back was, we should fix this, we should not have anything. I mean, we're the number nine town in the state, according to New Jersey Magazine, we don't want to have the word "substandard" linked with Denville. I know, you just said all the pride we have here. We don't really want to use the word "substandard" when we talk about Denville. So, we took this, and we decided, what are we going to do to fix it? And the decision really was, could we, could we do a small addition at Lakeview where the population was, or should we really fix the problem, do a larger addition at Riverview, and move some kids from Lakeview to Riverview? That really was the better idea, because Lakeview's about double the size of Riverview, and really, I would have a real hard time recommending any growth to Lakeview. It's already one of the largest elementary schools that you're, that you're going to find, so it wasn't really the option. So, we, it came down to really a $10 million referendum. The choices were pretty easy, it was one, do nothing, which to me, I felt like that was not even an option. Two, an addition at Lakeview, that really wasn't a great option either. Three, do the, do the addition at Riverview, and, for about $10 million. Or the fourth thing, after the board, the board really pushed back at the whole idea of, we're, it's uncertain time, so maybe we need to have a fourth idea. The fourth idea was to do the reconfiguration of the Lakeview Library, there's a couple other things to do, but rather than a $10 million job, it's some, maybe somewhere around a million dollars, or $900,000, which we have money for that in our reserves to cover. So, one of the things I really want to stress, that underlined, that underlined phrase up there, it says, "There is no more space in our current building envelope." Meaning, if, if we need to absorb kids into that class configuration I showed you, there's just no more room to put them, rather than, unless we want to start having classrooms again in substandard space. And just to clarify, our per pupil cost for 2017-18 is $17,149 per student. Now, you'll see different figures for that, and the reason why you're going to see different figures for that, that's our actual cost, but it's not a comparative cost. The reason why there's a difference between actual and comparative is because some districts don't have busing. Busing costs a lot of money, so it's hard to compare a busing district with a non-busing district. So if you see another number as the comparative cost, if you're going to try to compare Denville with like New Morris Plains, where they have less busing, that's, that's the reason why you might see those. And that's the last slide for me, and if it's permitted, I'd be happy to ask your questions from anybody in the council, or whoever else you want to do. It's up to you.
So, what we do is open up the public portion to let the public ask you questions about this presentation, and specifically, this presentation. Then when they finish, we'll, we'll let the council members comment and ask questions about the presentation.
Great, I'll, I'll, right here.
All right, thank you. So, would anybody from the public like to come up and address the Board of Education of the council about any topics on this presentation? Mr. Green, please take your name and address.
Gracie Nate Pleasant-Ballin. Average age of your schools, do you know? 70 plus, right?
Yeah, they're, the, one's built, the, two is the 50s, one of the 60s.
Two 50s and one 60s. So, the six-plus million you guys invested recently, infrastructure, but not really hard infrastructure, right? I mean, we are, we are completely maxed out in terms of capacity in any building in any classroom.
Yes.
So what's your option?
We'd have to increase the building envelope, so we'd have to do some type of building, either a new school, depending on how much new construction is built, or additions, maybe a combination of both.
How long would it take you to build a new school?
Well, I mean, we're nowhere near the phase yet, even.
How long?
I mean, from right now to having a new school built, I would say at least three years, that'd be a minimum, to have it built.
One more question, we'll step away. So, if whatever gets passed, possibly for an expansion of housing in this town, it gets built within one or two years, you'd have to, you'd have to, in parallel with that, start building a school almost immediately? When you start planning processes?
Well, the thing is, I, you know, that's a, that's a tough question to answer, only because the kids don't come like the first day that the schools are built, that they, they don't get filled with kids.
Right.
So it's a little bit of a slower process, but you would have, at, at the very least, to answer your question is, you better have some plans and be ready to move on, because it's not like you can wait, unless you want to start going back to trailers.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to come up and address?
Hi, Nick, I live in Nicole Drive, 64. Like I said, I spoke in here.
Excuse me, sir?
Nick Zumas, Nicole Drive, Nicole Drive. First time, second time here, spoke last time. That was kind of the numbers guy, I don't know if you remember that. And so, one of the questions I had is, I looked at the COA mandates, and some of that was actually in this study, and it looks like you're planning for another maybe 200 or 300 kids, approximately, right? And when I look at the COA numbers, one thing that we should know, I, it took me about a minute to look at their spreadsheet, at, on, on the Fair Share site, and on Fair Share, it vastly overestimates how many low-income folks that accommodations we need to make. For example, if you had a $300,000 or $400,000 house, and you just happened to move higher into like a better neighborhood because you like our schools, and you happen to spend 31% of your income on housing, according to Fair Share, you are a low-income person. And so that low-income person gets counted against us for, against the COA potential, all these, you know, models, from 112 to 1200, all these, all these vastly different numbers. And that middle-class household then would have to then pay, they won't, they won't take advantage, they won't be considered one of the low-income people that would move here, they would be, they would actually have to then pay through increased taxes and referendum, bonds, et cetera, to support what they were, you know, the thing that they were counted for, they won't even take, be a beneficiary of it. So, let's say in a realistic worst-case situation, we're talking maybe 200 or 300 kids, and I'm all for fixing the school's envelope, you know, development, upgrades, put in programs with more teachers, better, you know, family, you know, programs, but in the end, the new construction of schools in this country has been about $14 billion in 2014. Eight billion of them were on new schools. Sadly, no negligible difference in student performance. And there's a lot of other things from educational organizations that send a lot of different information, and I'm all for the environment being satisfied. But when we're talking about a new school, for example, the new school on Nicole that was proposed last time, the total cost of that school, if you can actually build it for the same price that you built it back then, the total cost, I'm not talking about the monthly cost, like you would go into, buy a car and say, hey, it's only $300 a month, that's your, you know, that's close. Total cost would be over $100 million, to, you know, and that's about $20,000 of debt for every household in Denville, and that's for 200 or 300 students, potentially. This is all speculative, we're all talking about speculation, because we don't know for sure, but I just wanted, you know, just put it out there about the cost and some of the options, and the, the hard work that the school has done should not be overlooked. I think improvements to what we have are overdue, and, you know, I think a lot of people support that. I think, taking that next leap, if all these construction projects occur, all of them, okay, you can very easily get to, to almost a quarter of a billion dollars of extra infrastructure costs, over 30 years. You know, this, these are significant costs to this, to the, to the town of only 6,500 households. So, that's my comment, I don't have a specific question, but I just wanted to throw those numbers out there, just in case someone hasn't been paying attention. Thank you.
Any bills from the public like to comment or question? And would like to ask that if you do, for our council meetings, and this is a Board of Education, we'd like to try to keep the questions and comments to about three to five minutes, and make sure everyone gets a chance to comment. Mr. Grant?
John's going to trip me on my way up. Bob Grant, 114 Bridgewood Parkway East in Lake Arrowhead. If I'm understanding your presentation, Steve, you based your additional student populations on about 300 units.
Right.
100 rental, 200. The Denville Housing Plan that the administration and the council submitted to the court calls for 375 units. So I'm just wondering, you know, my math says that's a 25% increase over your estimates, would that be a fair extrapolation of the numbers that you put up there?
Well, the problem is, the reason why I wanted to use a sample is because there's so many different things that could go on within the numbers, meaning like if there's, if there's an additional 75 one-bedroom units, you have really no, no increase.
But, for example, in the, in the presentation that Ramaswati's made before the council, that's the Toll Brothers, 150 unit, it started off as 150 units, I believe it presented to the council at 116 units, and they said there would be 92, 30, and 400 units when the attorney for Ramaswati questioned, so that would up those numbers. And I agree with you, a lot of this is, is what-if kind of numbers crunching, because we don't, yeah, the only, excuse me, the only thing that's been built is the 100 units over at Essendon Light. So, you know, everything else is, is kind of, you know, what-if kind of thing, but since Denville asked the court to approve this plan, seems to me that's a, you know, that's, it's fair that they anticipate that number of housing units with those number of bedrooms. The Glennon Commons, it's got 42 three-bedroom units in it. So we may be looking at, at, instead of 250 kids, we may be looking at 300, 325, somewhere around there. I just wanted to be clear on it. And, and for the council, one of the things that the special masters reported that I found very curious, actually, two things. One was that the special master said that in calculating some of its requirement for affordable housing, that the calculations from Denville to the court did not follow Denville's steep slope ordinance when it was calculating the number of units on steep slopes. So, you know, it's something that you might take a look at and see, you know, why that happened. You know, we're paying experts to be expert, and, you know, if they make a mistake and don't follow our own ordinances in offering calculations to the, to the court, I think that presents a, when I was a newspaper reporter, the editor used to tell me, if you got one thing wrong in a story, the whole story is questionable. So, you know, it just suggests that the-
Okay, so without, without new construction, we feel we can chew horn the kids in without substandard space. The additional, addition of what I showed here, 251 students, we do not believe we can accommodate within our current building envelope.
So if I can mention that difference that you're speaking to, and if by God's will, the Denville township decides we will build our COA requirements just for the COA requirements, and that will be a number, and we're not going to talk hypotheticals, a number, obviously that number would be less, and therefore the cost to the citizens of Denville would be less as well. Is that a correct statement?
Well, I, if it's, if it's just a certain, if it's a less number, I think it would. I can't tell you exactly, because the configuration of the, of the units that would be built makes a big difference, meaning according to our demographer, I'll give you an example, a one-bedroom COA for sale yields .2 students, and a three-bedroom COA for sale yields 1.5 students. So depending on the configuration of the development that you're talking about, would have a big difference in how many kids come out.
So therefore, if the requirement is a certain number of COA units, not necessarily the number of bedrooms, and Denville said, we're going to build all one-bedroom units, if that's permissible, assuming that to be the case, then it's not a direct correlation, it's actually much, much less if that was done that way. Is that a correct statement?
According, yeah, according to the data we have, that would yield much less than a one, if it was all one-bedroom compared to three-bedroom.
And if we had all one-bedrooms built that way, then based upon, let's use your hypothetical number, and I'll take 300 units as a number, all one-bedroom, would we be able to then shoehorn them into what we have presently without increasing or.
So according to our demographer, 300 one-bedroom units would yield approximately 60 students. 60 students, if they were spread properly, I gave you the, I give you our spread right now, we may be able to fit them in. There might be a couple that would be difficult, but 60 is a lot less than 250.
Thank you.
Charles Body, 73 Mathless in Turnpike. Is this going to be, this presentation going to be on your website?
Yes, it'll be on our website, and it will be, it's video, so the video will be on the website, and it will go out in our Friday folder.
Okay, how about the demographic study, is that already on there?
That's on there.
Okay, great, I just wanted to be sure, because it's kind of hard to see and understand if you haven't been involved in it, and here's a public chance to do that. Thanks very much.
Any others from the public?
Council President, if, if Mayor and I were speaking, if, I don't mean to put John Jensen on the spot, but with respect to the comments of all one-bedroom COA units, do you happen to know the formula? I know there's a percentage of one, percentage of two, percentage of three, I don't have that.
I don't, I don't know the exact formula, but you're correct, you cannot build all one-bedroom units. The housing code requires a certain number, three-bedroom, a certain number, two-bedroom, a certain number, one-bedroom, and all the number of units need to serve.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet for the first time, if not, will go to Mr. Pritchett?
Catherine Valentino, 43, Esslin Lake Road. I'm wondering if we know now what our responsibility is for COA units, as we didn't when the units were built across the street from me.
We don't, 1%.
Okay, so again, we have a hypothetical presentation, we don't know what our responsibility is, and we're talking about more development, and now possibly a hundred million dollar burden for a school, when we don't, still do not know what our responsibility of COA units is to the state. How does this benefit Denville and its residents?
So I'll correct my answer a little bit. Do we know our absolute number? No, but we feel, we know the floor, and we know the max, and we feel relatively certain the number will be in between the two.
And what is that number in between? It was the same question when I asked.
I don't know where.
You need to tell me how tall the building across the street from me was going to be. And I asked that question four or five times, it's all transcribed. Here we are in another situation where I feel like questions are not, there's no hard number yet.
Correct.
How come we're developing, and developing, and developing, when we still don't know what our responsibility is, and we live with these, they're here? We are irrevocably changing our town.
Whatever.
Is that to the town's benefit?
So let me try two things. One, why are we doing this? We've talked about it several times at recent meetings, but I'd like to not answer that now, because this time is dedicated to the Board of Education.
I feel this is directly, this presentation wouldn't be happening if we weren't developing. Is that not directly related?
You know what, the Board of Education does present to us and the public regularly, the Board of Education does plan for growth and do demographic studies periodically. So I think that this presentation, and presentations like it may have occurred in the past, and they will occur again in the future with or without development. So I will repeat my request, that, and we'll have it, we will have it open public portion for anything anyone else wants to talk about, but for this, I'd like it to be dedicated to these slides and the comments presented by Mr. Forte and Mr. Capello.
Will there be an answer to my questions this evening?
Is that the best of my ability? I think so, yes. I mean, but I can't really.
Are you talking about the hard numbers?
No, those don't exist.
Then why are we building?
All right, so let's go. Would anybody else in the public?
Why are we building if we don't know what our obligation is?
Can I make a clarification too, because I don't want data out there that's not accurate or that's uncertain. We, we're throwing around a hundred million dollar number, and that's never been studied or talked about, so please don't just take that for a fact. We don't have any idea what we would build, where we would build it, and the cost of such building. I know there was plans a few years, and I can't really talk about it, because I wasn't here then to build a school, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that we had never done any studies or talked about it, so we have no idea the cost of the school or what we would build.
All right, would anybody else from the public like to address any of these slides on the presentation by the Board of Education this evening? Mr. Pritch, uh, Mr. Pritch in Corrigan.
Captain, 100 minutes. Um, thank you, appreciate it, it was a bummer. Uh, you know, I had written you, and you know, I'm, I respect for everything you do and the Board of Education, you know, we all know the work. I think aside from the numbers, if you can take one thing from all of this, the overarching principle here, which might have to be modified, is perhaps the council can basically take where they are and reset, and include the Board of Education much more closely than you have. I know there's a long-standing tradition, as I've written you, that says, you know, the board does their thing, the council does their thing, and we respect that, but I think at this juncture, the process probably needs to be modified slightly, and we need to have a much more close integration with the Board of Education. It might give some heft to what you do or don't want to do, and I think that's part of what's going on here. I know they've been trying to give to you since May or so, and now they're here, and we guys are down the road a little bit, and we get that, but if you could give that some consideration, I'd be grateful. I think that's, that might be a positive approach and something that's slightly, slightly different, so, you know, I respect you guys, and I appreciate the work you do, but we need to do something different, there's no doubt about it, so.
Mr. Cohen, did you want to come back?
I do, since I was corrected in making the hypothetical assumption that I did, and I accept the correction. However, we are working with hypothetical assumptions, so rather than do that and to take the correction to heart, I would suggest that the board and the council look at what we think our number is, whatever that number is, and do the calculation according to level, and determine how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom, and how many three-bedrooms we need in total, not with builder's remedy attached to it. And then look at the board to turn around and say, now what will that cost us, so we have a real number, and understand the real number. So the correction is accepted, and now I put it back to you to do what you need to do.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to address the council, or the board, to Mr. Grant?
Bob Grant, Lake Arrowhead. One of the things that I've asked the council in past meetings for is to consider the overall development and its impact on the community.
And these comments are directed to this presentation, right?
Right, right, well, if you want me to wait, I'll go back and sit down, but what I was, just very briefly, what I was going to suggest is you heard from the schools, there are several other aspects of infrastructure which are going to be impacted by development of this magnitude, police, fire protection, traffic, potable water, sewage, and so forth. So I think it would be extremely useful in taking what John Parrenian's suggestion that you bring the Board of Education a little more deeply into the process, is that we get presentations from those other affected areas of the infrastructure, so that at the end of that process, the town, the town council, the administration, and the public knows what it's dealing with. Thank you.
One question.
Nick Zoomus, Nicole Drive. I'm looking at the actual demographer's report, and so the, all the projections I see of our 2022 requirements are actually less than the enrollment that we had in 2012, 10 years ago, 10 years prior, is that correct?
Can you say that again?
The projection in the demographer's report, giving some of these assumptions, still has the overall enrollment of the school in the year, the out-year 2022, it's still less than the population enrollment from 2012. Is that correct? I'll show it to you, it's right there. There it is.
It doesn't add yet, well, this, these don't have developments.
Right, right, but that's, but no, no, that's, right, that's the demographer's report, and there is some assumptions in there. So if you look at it, there's a COA, you know, report statement right at the beginning of that report, okay? All right, so just, so it's still less, according to the demographer's report, that's all, I'm just asking a question.
So one of the things you have to consider about that is, we use our space very differently than we did even just a few years ago. Steve talked a little bit about this. We have full, we have full-day kindergarten, which doubled the size of the, doubled the numbers of sections we have, between classrooms.
Between kindergarten and pre-k, we went up, we went up seven rooms, seven full-sized rooms.
We also have greater need for special education classes, you're talking about resource rooms, you're talking about small instruction rooms, we're not sitting a teacher in front of forty kids anymore that are in nicely rows. So the way we use the schools is different, and they're more tense. So we are at, you know, we've been wrestling with this for several years, even though we were looking at somewhat declining moments, we were still looking at greater utilization of our buildings. So that's important to keep in mind.
Yep. All right, at this point in time, let the close the public portion on the Denville Board of Education presentation, and ask the council members for questions or comments, if they have any. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. I've looked at this, and that last remark, I think I agree with, that the, the end of the 2022 would be something like an additional couple hundred students, but it would still be below the peak of, I believe, the 2007, '08 year. One of the things that I asked when I was at the foundation, and Dino, I think I asked you, and I know I definitely asked Michael Henderson, we have three, let's call them high-density sites in town, the Forges, Berkshire Hills, and Esslin Village. And I would, I would like to have seen a slide included here as to the students that come from those developments and the makeup of those developments as compared to our plans submitted to the courts to meet our fair share obligation. I, I think, you know, I, I've lived through the schools, my, my daughter has, has gone to all Denville schools, I remember back when Dr. Clark had a demographer, and the demographer said that we really needed to have another school, and, and that, that was over, based on my backtracking on your.
So rather than do that and to take the correction to heart, I would suggest that the Board and the council look at what we think our number is, whatever that number is, and do the calculation according to what, and determine how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom, and how many three-bedrooms we need in total, not with builder's remedy attached to it. And then look at the Board to turn around and say, "Now what will that cost us?" So we have a real number, and understand the reality. So the, the correction is accepted, and now I put it back to you to do what you need to do.
Thank you. Would anybody else, uh, from the Board like to address the council, or the, or the, Mr. Grant?
Bob Grant, like, all right. Um, one of the things that I asked the council in past meetings for is to consider the overall development and its impact on the community.
And these comments are directed to this presentation, right?
Right, right. Well, if you want me to wait, I'll go back and sit down, but what I was, just very briefly, what I was going to suggest is you heard from the schools. There are several other aspects of infrastructure which are going to be impacted by development of this magnitude, police, fire protection, traffic, potable water, sewage, and so forth. So I think it would be extremely useful in taking what John Parrenian's suggestion that you bring the Board of Education a little more deeply into the process, is that we get presentations from those other affected areas of the infrastructure, so that at the end of that process, the town, the town council, the administration, and the public knows what it's dealing with. Thank you.
Next, someone's Nicole Drive. I'm looking at the actual demographer's report, and so the, all the projections I see of our 2022 requirements are actually less than the enrollment that we had in 2012, 10 years ago, 10 years prior. Is that correct?
Can you state that again?
The projection in the demographer's report, giving some of these assumptions, still has the overall enrollment of the school in the year, the out-year 2022. It's still less than the population enrollment from 2012. Is that correct? I'll show it to you, it's right there.
It doesn't add yet, well, this, these don't have developments.
Right, right, but that's, but no, no, that's, right, that's the demographer's report. And there is some assumptions in there. So if you look at it, there's a COA, you know, report statement right at the beginning of that report, okay? All right, so just, so it's still less, according to the demographer's report. That's all, I'm just asking a question.
So one, one of the things you have to consider about that is we use our space very differently than we did, you know, just a few years ago. Steve talked a little bit about this. We have full, we have full-day kindergarten, which doubled the size of the, doubled the number of sections we have between classrooms.
Yeah, between kindergarten and pre-K, we, we went up, we went up seven rooms, seven of the full-size rooms.
We also have greater need for special education classes. You're talking about resource rooms, you're talking about small instruction rooms. We're not sitting a teacher in front of 40 kids anymore that are in nicely rows. So the way we use the schools is different, and they're more tense. So we are at, you know, we've investigated this for several years, even though we're looking at somewhat declining moments, we're still looking at greater utilization of our buildings. So that's important to keep in mind.
Yep. All right, at this point in time, I'd like to close the public portion on the Denville Board of Education presentation, and ask the council members for questions or comments, if they have any. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. I've looked at this, and that last remark, I, I think I agree with, that the, the end of the 2022 would be something like an additional couple hundred students, but it would still be below the peak of, I believe, the 2007, '08 year. One of the things that I asked when I was at the foundation, and Dino, I think I asked you, and I know I definitely asked Michael Henderson, we have three, let's call them high-density sites in town, the Forges, Berkshire Hills, and Essling Village. And I would, I would like to have seen a slide included here as to the students that come from those developments, and the makeup of those developments, as compared to our plans submitted to the courts to meet our fair share obligation. I, I think, you know, I, I've lived through the schools. My, my daughter has, has gone to all of Denville's schools. I remember back when Dr. Clark had a demographer, and the demographer said that we really needed to have another school, and, and that, that was over, based on my backtracking on your calendar, that, that was back in the 2003, 2004, before you were here, Mr. Forte. And, and those demographer studies didn't bear out. So I, I, I think we've got actual history, and, and I would like to see the Board develop a slide based on the actual history, rather, rather than, you know, it might help to remove some of the speculation. I, I really applaud you guys for coming here. I think this information is great. I, I guess the one thing that I want to say to the public, you know, we, we keep talking about COA, and we're acting as if COA is driving school expansion. And certainly, when we look at your slide, you know, COA is driving development, which has the knock-on effect of driving school potential development. It's, it's a very complex issue, and I think one of the things at the end of the issue, is you try to separate the different silos of the issue. You know, the courts don't care about our schools. They really don't. And whereas we have to make a, a valid attempt to meet our COA obligation, and that may drive some of the development that increases the, the enrollment, you know, it's, I think the decision is separate and distinct. Yes, it has an impact. I recognize that impact, and as Mr. Grant pointed out, to this infrastructure, to the police, to everybody else, and we recognize that impact, but the courts don't care about it. And that's the quandary that we in the council funders still sit. Thank you for your presentation and your time.
Mr. Fager?
Oh, yeah, one thing, if you don't mind. Actually, I want to just circle back to Essling Lake for a second. We have those numbers. We can obviously give you the, the numbers for recent developments. One thing I want to point out is, for Essling Lake particularly, all along the development, I think Mr. Breeja might back me up on this, is it was always presented that Essling Lake would turn out basically zero children because of the configuration.
Number seven.
Right, well, that's exactly right. Our demographer actually called for it between 7 and 9, and that's the number we, we came up with. But there were early representations that because it was a commuter village, because of the way the units were, that there was going to be no impact on services.
It was number seven. It was number zero.
6.5.
It was.
And not more children.
That's fact. I presented to the council, distinctly told me there would be no children in that development.
Yeah, I was there that day.
So, so we, we have a difference of opinion there. But we get you those numbers, that's absolutely no problem. The other thing I want to point out about the difference between 2012 and 2022, the projections, the numbers being lowered, the science of the way we're using our space and the requirements. In 2012, we had students in every trailer in the district. We're not doing anything. It's not viable in this day and age to have students going in and out of the buildings into those trailers. We made a decision that that's not going to be how we can operate, so that is obviously a factor when you're talking about the numbers.
And I applaud you on that decision. Let's get rid of the question.
Uh, I'm just kidding, because I think most of the question.
Are you, though, currently teaching music out of the trailers?
The only, the only trailers being used for students right now are Lakeview, and we are teaching music in both trailers.
Right, so they are being used.
They are being used at Lakeview for students. Plan is to eliminate the use of trailers at Lakeview for some construction done this summer.
As far as the kindergarten classes, though, how many kindergarten classes do you have at River View versus Lakeview?
We have basically K, K, five. We have eight sections all through the district. Five at Lakeview, three at River View.
So five kindergarten.
Five kindergarten, three at River View.
And as far as, then, we're discussing the lifespan of the schools.
Just speaking to the microphone.
It's, it's.
I'm sorry, it's, it doesn't work. I'm just saying. It was ringing. You guys had heard? Okay. The lifespan of the school to be 50 to 60 years old, what is the average lifespan of a school before you need to get a new school?
I mean, there, there's schools that are 100 years old. It's, it's really the maintenance of the school, and more, more really the fact that there's no more room in the school. Plus, the, some of the, some of, like, a large portion of Lakeview was, was built in 2001, half the school, so, so it's, yeah, even though the main part of the building was built prior to that. And, you know, Valley View has additions, River View had an addition in the late '90s, so it, it, you know, varies.
Yeah, my children were there when, in Lakeview, when the expansion did happen, and they were part of the largest classes it did have, which leads me over to the, to this here. And, and you always have, uh, the low was with the enrollment, yes. So back in, you know, right now, it looks, it appears in 2017 to '18, you're looking probably about 350 less students now than you had back in the height, which was 2007 to 2009. So how do you account for that now, saying you don't have perhaps all the room that you had back then?
Yeah, so, so there's two real big things. One is the way we use our states.
Right.
Meaning, we now have full-day kindergarten, that accounted for seven additional rooms between pre-K and kindergarten. So there's seven rooms right there.
You said there were six kindergarten classes, five students.
There's eight. There's eight now.
But in Lakeview, six alone.
There's five. There's five.
I understand that.
They use, they only use two rooms at one point, because there was only four sections of kindergarten, because when you have part-time kindergarten, many people choose not to send their kids to kindergarten, send them out. So your numbers go up in first grade. Does that make sense? So between the fact that we, we had the half-day kindergarten, no pre-K, less special ed, and the use of substandard space, meaning trailers, you took four, four classrooms at Valley View, two at River View, two at Lakeview, and classes being taught in split rooms, like I showed you on that picture, and classes being taught in hallways. So those are all substandard, substandard instructional spaces. What we're saying is, at the end of this year, going into next year, we will no longer use substandard space for students, but we are totally filled.
As they were back then as well, and there were 350 more states.
Also, just to add to that, you also during those peak years had things like art on the car, music on the car. I mean, you really had some really inefficient, ineffective, not because you had the choice.
And one other thing. Oh, you mentioned the Lakeview library, expanding on that, not that you wanted to, but what would be done if you did?
So I don't know if you'd see in the Valley View or River View library, but basically the same system we did in Valley View and River View. We're taking, because it's modern, you know, things have changed. Less, less reference books, for example. You know, not too many people look at atlases anymore, you know, look at encyclopedias. So you're able to read some of the old books that you used to use, that people used to look up facts in, in books and don't anymore. And also desktop computers that are kind of getting obsolete. Take that space, make it into classroom space in the library, actual classrooms, not, not some fake walls, but actual, like, walls with windows and everything. And then you create classrooms in there. By creating classrooms in the library, you no longer use the classrooms in the trailers.
But you're not completely on board with that option? Is that what you were saying earlier today?
No, I'm on board with it for now. It's just, it just gives us no room for growth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I, just, one sort of statement, and again, to just clarify that, and there's a fact that was put out from the administration, what we're dealing with, with affordable housing through the court system. You know, just so it's very clear, the court does not care. We, we completely hear all of this, and I think we're equally as frustrated that this is going to be an enormous impact to our entire infrastructure of our schools. And that is not a factor. They've actually stated that does not weigh in as a factor of the schools. Maybe water and sewer, there's some opportunity for development or whatever to accommodate, but the school system, the court has said, is not a factor in us determining our affordable housing. I just wanted to be really clear, because I know there's a lot of thought, well, the council should just stop the development, just say no to development. But just remember, the moment that we say no to development, these interveners, potential developers, could go for a builder's remedy, and it's going to be a lot more than what this demographics, could be a lot more than what this demographics, the demographics study is showing. So with the Board of Ed here, I urge all of us, as well as the council, and I know the administration put this out, there is at least nine assembly bills sitting in the assembly right now, that are not being discussed, are not being debated. That's the only way this is going to stop. The, the court system is going to come back and say, "Yeah, Denville, you're cool, you're great. Don't worry. It's not going to happen." I urge everybody to write a symbol of this. Speaker of the Assembly, and, and there's 84667, S3081, 85025, about nine phone. That's the only way this is going to stop. I urge everyone to write that letter. Thanks. Ms. Wood?
And on top of that, the courts don't care about the impact on fire. They don't care about the impact on the police. They don't care about the traffic. They don't care about any of that. The only thing is they're going to set a number and say, "You're going to have to build," period. They don't care what it's doing to the town. So as Mr. Fitzpatrick said, the best thing you can do is write to these people, get on the, you know, get on their case, that they're not pushing these things through, to change the whole process.
All right, I'll ask you a few questions, if that's all right. So if I, just from what I heard tonight, we are down about 350 students from 2008?
Or the maximum to now, correct?
Okay, so we're down about 350 students, and, but the need for classrooms continues to grow, because we went to full-day kindergarten, which did two things. It increased the amount of space we need, plus ordered more students, right? And the need for special education and the special accommodations that we have to make is a very big driver of classroom utilization, I think.
Correct.
And cost.
And cost, right? So, so those, those changes really had nothing to do with development. It just, that's the fact of life. So we may need a new school, we may not, I don't know, but it, so, um, part of it would be due to development, and there's some development. Denville, you know, 100 years ago, looked a little bit different than it does now, I'm sure, and there was some development, and that was, you know, allowed, and that's how we, we got here. But not all the need for new classrooms is coming from development. It's, it's due to demographic changes, new laws that require special education, and some decisions that we make to go to full-day kindergarten. That's contributions, right? Okay. All right, so anything from the administration, any question now, before we move on with the agenda?
No, just like, let, let the, the members of the Board know and the public that the administration and the council is going to strive to fight for both the, fight this as much as we can. We're going to protect the municipality, fund the builder's remedy. We're going to try to get the number of bedrooms as, as low as we possibly can, in every way that we, in every way that we can. We're going to try to take outside the box, and trying to get as many senior units as we can, as many group homes as we can, many, going to try to be as creative as we possibly can to keep the impact as low as we possibly can. And, so, just wanted to, put on the record that, you know, we will, we'll be working hand in hand.
So thank you very much for coming out tonight in force of the Board of Ed, and for, really for partnering with us on, you know, getting better and better at working together.
No, thank you, and I just want to say, you know, we, we know you're in a tough spot, you know, we know these are tough decisions. Really, our goal, like I said in the beginning, was really to give you the information hopefully you need when you're looking at these, so you can understand the impact. We understand development's not going to stop in Denville, of course it's not, but, you know, if we can make the smartest decision we can make in terms of what the developments look like, obviously that helps us as much as possible. Anything you need from us in terms of information, support, we're here, we're here for that. Thank you.
So we're going to go on with the regular agenda now. There will be another public portion, so you, Board of Ed, you are welcome, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to stay, but there may be some of the comments of interest. Okay, you will go to close your meeting.